Hi, Oscar. Welcome to the Woodstock Planning Board.
Hi, thank you for having me. I'm happy to be here.
We're excited to have you.
Hi. And I started looking at the draft log and boy, it is complicated, isn't it? Did we get, did we get any drawings?
For all the cases?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, hmm.
You must have been busy.
I was. Let me see if I can find them and.
I think last Friday I sent them to you guys. Friday, everything.
Tune to meeting content?
Yep.
No, that's just minutes.
Oh, that was recent. This was like two weeks ago, Friday. And it should just be the three.
Well, maybe I kept them. Let me see if I got them in my, in my. I don't know if I do. So if I search on one of the names like Hong, that's a nice easy name to look for. June 16th meeting content. Okay.
Yay.
Okay, so I got them where I can get them. I got them on my map, but I didn't get, I didn't download the other things. So let's see. We've got a drawing for Zhang and Spencer Seamus. Lots of drawings. And I don't see one for however you pronounce the other name.
Oh, Lori Yosavather? Yeah, it came with that same group. If you check that date.
Hmm. Okay, let me look again. It did not download with the same thing, so. No, that's not one of the attachments for that. For that, uh, let me go back and it's a June 3rd email, so. Like it was not in the same message, but that doesn't mean I can't get it. I just have to.
No, I usually do them separate.
Okay. Well, give me the beginning of the spelling of that name. Y V L?
Yep, Y L V, actually.
Y L V, okay. And that should, that should pull it up. Nope.
Okay.
Well, just let me look at nine, at nine, three then. Get out of the search here. I mean, six, three, meeting content. Here it is. I got it.
Okay, I see James joined us. We have a quorum. And it is 6:30. So I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Woodstock Planning Award for June 16th, 2022, held via Zoom. Melissa, are there any updates to the agenda?
Nope.
Okay, under Communications and Announcements, we have an email from Howard Harris. I believe that's the right one.
Yep, you got it.
Yeah, I received June 8th, and then we have Talk of the Towns and Topics, which will receive June 13th, and an email from the New York S H P O regarding the fanmaker subdivision. So.
Do you want to approve minutes now or later?
Oh, yeah, that's, I'm sorry. Let's, uh, the minutes for, um.
June 2nd.
June 2nd. If everybody is good to them the way they are, I propose we accept them.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, guys.
Okay.
I wasn't present, so.
Okay, so we have before us, under new business, we have, I think, three sketch plan reviews. All right, so the first one is the Bearsville Center LLC Planning Board Case 22-1232, and Special Use Permit Number 22-0141F. And this is a sketch plan review of a subdivision and site plan review applications for a lot line revision to revise and merge lot lines between three parcels to create two parcels in the NC zoning district located at 277 and 297 Tinker Street. And the rep is Medenbach and Eggers. They are here. Or representative.
Yes, we have Solomon here from Medenbach and we have Lizzy also.
Okay, so would you please tell the planning board what it is you're proposing to do?
There? Oh, okay. Um, it's basically a, a lot line adjustment where we would remove the lot lines in between parcels, 26.4-3-3 and 26.4-3-4.100. And turn those into a single lot, and we would also remove the lot line in between 26.4-3-5 and 26.4-3-4.100. And then we would create a new lot around the existing barn. And turn that into housing.
Okay, what's the, what's the purpose of doing this lot line revision?
To create a new house?
A housing lot?
Yes.
Okay.
It's also to clean up the fact that somehow or other, when I bought the property, it was lots of different little parcels that had been purchased in the past by previous owners, and now I'd like to own just one piece of property. It would just make things a lot simpler. And then one of the people involved with Bearsville would like to build to renovate the barn, the big old red barn that is there, and make it into a house. And I think that's a really good use of the property, so that's why we're applying for a change of use on that.
Okay, we don't have the map up in front of us, so I'm assuming.
I can put it up.
Because I'm assuming that it's the residential houses that you're talking about making a separate lot, correct?
So, um, I can't, uh. The red barn, which is on the right of this draw, at the right of this photograph, uh, which is 277 Tinker Street. No, it's actually a little further right, Judith.
Okay, give me a second.
So it's the one right where the numbers, where it says 212 Tinker Street? Can you click in there? No, a little further right. There, yes, where the hand is.
Yeah.
Uh, no, it's not on the road. It's. Um, oh, okay, I am sorry. It was the original lot. I wish I could, but yes, there. Could you click on that? So what is there is, in the right of that, is you can see the roof of an old red barn that's over 100 years old that is virtually falling down, but a beautiful old, has great structure. It was used by a cabinet maker, Paul Alexander, when I first bought the property, and then he left last November. It would make a beautiful house, so we're trying to separate that out from the rest of the property because I'm probably going to sell it to my employee to build a residence there. The other thing we're trying to do is, you can just see on the left of that plot that Judith has, yes, that's the Wilson House, that one there with the hand on it, and just to the right of that, there's the suites there, yes. And they have been residences used for employees at Bearsville and others. I think John Kirkpatrick's daughter lived in one of them. And I just would like to clean it up and make it all part of the bigger lot. It just seems to be the right time to do that.
So you would make a lot line somewhere in here?
Yes, a 30,000 square foot lot around the barn, and then everything else will become just part of Bearsville.
Looking at zoning, it's neighborhood commercial, which means you probably, I don't know how many acres that is, but you probably can do that.
No, she can. I already checked everything. It's legit. We checked it.
Sorry, of course you did.
Okay, any members of the board have any questions for Liz regarding this application?
Do you want me to try to find the drawings that she sent? Because I probably can.
No, that's okay, because that's, we get the general picture. We're just going to cut out a piece and everything else is going to be one lot. I don't see any issues with it. I know that it has town water there.
Correct.
But, uh.
And it also has in-ground existing septic.
Thanks, Solomon.
Okay, any members of the board have any questions? Because it seems pretty straightforward and, uh, if, if, um, if need be, we can have a site rep go out and take a look. It's easy to get to.
But the, whoever made the comment on the septic, could they repeat that, please?
There is existing in-ground septic.
Has it been tested?
I, I can't say for sure. I can find out and answer that question at a later time.
And if it hasn't, we'll certainly get it tested because we, we need to make sure everything works correctly. That's what we do. As you can tell, we're very thorough with the way that we're addressing it. And just so the rest of you know, that car lot will be done within the next two weeks and we can start landscaping again.
The orange, the orange line that I just turned on is the water lines.
Right, so the lot obviously has road access, driveway access.
Yes.
I don't see any other issues unless any member has a question. I think we can just get it to a public hearing.
No questions, Peter.
All right. That's good.
All right, Melissa, can you get a chance to get together with Liz and set them up for a hearing?
Lizzy, it'll probably be end of July, beginning of August, somewhere around there.
That's fine. Thank you very much.
So I'll, we'll, we'll schedule that in the near future.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
Compared to some of them.
But we like these.
Okay, uh, the next sketch plan review before us is Hong Zhang and Nora Specter Shamas, which is Planning Board Case 22-1172A. And this is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application for a lot line revision to transfer 0.03 acres in the R3 zoning district from 73 Ricks Road to 42 Spear Road. And it's going to result in two new lots, one of 0.72 acres and the other of 58.53 acres. And again, we have Medenbach and Eggers and Tracy Kellogg as reps, so if, uh, one of you or both of you want to tell the planning board what you plan to do.
Is this okay for the drawings or do you want one of the other ones?
I think that's good.
Okay. So, I, I mean, I'm, I'm happy, but Medenbach and Eggers has done the bulk of the work. I'm just here to represent Noreen if there's any issues or I can walk you through.
All right, my first question is, what's the purpose of this slot line revision?
So, okay, I'll, I'll do it if, if Solomon's not responding. Is Solomon there?
I, yes, I am here, but I'm actually not familiar with this project at all. I was told you would speak on it, so I'm just sitting here to, to see a bit about it.
Okay, no problem. So the purpose of this lot is, this is a minor lot line adjustment just because Hong Zhang's, uh, parcel requires one to adjust for the setback, and I believe that there is an encroachment on the property.
I know Hong, Hong is here. Uh, I believe, hi, guys. I believe it's a building and it's .03 acres. And I saw Noreen today. It's just kind of a neighbor.
Right, she's just, she's just granting, she's granting the the third of an acre just to, to allow him to have setbacks along his current shed.
Right, so this is to basically solve an approaching or setback issue?
Correct.
Okay, nothing else is going to change? There's no proposed buildings or roads or anything changing?
No.
Okay, any members of the planning board have any questions for the applicant or for Kelly, Tracy, I mean?
No, so no, no, no new structures, no rows, no new lot, you know, no new lots are being created. It's literally a neighbor providing area so that there's no encroachments.
Again, it seems incredibly straightforward. Unfortunately, we can't, um, we have to go through a public hearing because it is a lot line revision. It's so minor. Uh, it doesn't seem like we need to, but that's the case, so, um, unless any members of the board have any questions, I think we can forego a site view, a site visit, and just get them scheduled for a public hearing. I mean, normally I would ask, you know, to avoid the public hearing, but it, that's, we have to go with it.
The only issue I would ask because it's, I didn't check and, and I don't know whether anyone else has, are we exempt from the rec fee because of no new lots are being created?
Yes, you are. No, no lots are being created, so you won't be charged the $1,000 fee. Yeah. This is just a lot line adjustment. There's a fee, but it's not the, the, that.
Right, right. I mean, it wouldn't be Noreen's, but I just wanted to.
It's minimal compared to that one, yeah.
Right.
All right, so that sounds straightforward and so.
John has a question.
Yes?
Peter, is there any way we can waive the public hearing?
Well, it, it's minor in scope, absolutely minor in scope. I think we've waived really tiny lot line revisions like this before. I mean, this is, I know we did one that was a piece of a stone wall that was about four foot and we waived it. I, I, if the board's good with waiving it, I'm fine with it because it's, it's really.
If, if the board agrees that it's minor in scope, we have waived before, especially when it's between neighbors and there's not a lot of other stuff going on. We have, so it's up to you, planning board, whatever you decide. John?
Okay, members, do you feel we can waive further review on this?
I do.
James says yes. Judy says yes. John says yes, so, okay.
Connor says yes too. Can you hear me?
Okay.
Yep.
Here you are. You guys, at the next meeting, we'll have a resolution prepared. It's just time now, Mr. Zhang, Tracy, and it's a process and everything, but, um, the planning board will approve a document at the next meeting, so in the next few weeks, I'll be talking to you guys and we'll get everything finalized, get the final maps, come signed off on, so within the next month, I would say, you'd be good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, good, good.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
That was, that was the two of the easiest ones we've had in a while. Okay, our next.
I'm trying.
Our next sketch plan review is for Lori Uves Hocker and is Planning Board Case 22-1233. And this is a sketch plan review of a subdivision application to subdivide a 22.4 acre lot into two parcels of 16.4 and 6 acres in the R8 and R5 zoning district located at 371 Yari Hill Road. And the rep is Jeffrey Hooligan of Praetorius and Conrad, so if you would like to tell the planning board what it is you'd like to do.
Good evening, everyone. Would you like me to share my screen or would?
Sure, if you have the map you can put up, that'd be great.
Okay.
We like that. Thank you.
Okay, um, let me see if I can do this.
I've got your data, but I don't know which of your, of your documents you want.
Uh, it would just be the sketch plan.
Okay, I can, I can probably get it for you.
Yeah, maybe you could do it easier than me.
Um, sketch plan, yes, I see it right here. Okay, let me get the share screen. There you are.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Um, so, yes, as Peter said, I'm representing Lori Blasker. I apologize to her if I didn't say her name right. I'm not sure how to pronounce it either. We also have Neil Grant here, who is, um, the reason that we're here is that, uh, Neil is looking to purchase the six acre lot once it's created from Lori. And basically, uh, the sketch plan shows the 22 acre lot at the intersection of Yari Hill and O'Hale Mountain Road. Uh, to the left of the page, there's an existing house and a barn and a driveway from Yari Hill Road. The property also extends off of DeGraff's Way on a, more to the, um, easterly side of the property and services an existing house along O'Hale Mountain Road. One of the houses owned by the DeGraff family, and then it continues up, um, an incline and, um, so a switchback to property owned by Park. So there's three houses currently serviced by this private road. And what Neil would like to do is purchase the six acres at the northeast corner of the property. There's a nice kind of meadow plateau area, and you can see, uh, we've got a driveway.
Here or up here?
Uh, more to the, uh, the, the upper right of the property.
Oh, here.
Correct. So you, we have a proposed driveway shown coming off the private road. A modest sized house with a possible pool and then a detached garage structure with a proposed septic system and reserve area even further right. So all construction would be taking place on this plateau area. Uh, we've had the health department out there last week. We did test holes and everything looked good for either a shallow trench or possibly even an in-ground system, so that's been started.
Yeah, I just pulled this up to take a look, and the wetlands aren't anywhere near where you are, so that's all.
Yeah, it's pretty high and dry up there. Um, didn't notice any kind of surface water. Um, it is in a DEP watershed. We had the inspector, Alicia Whitmarsh, out there, and she basically deferred it to the health department because there was no water courses within a 200 feet of, uh, development, so she's going to let the health department review the application for the septic system. So, um, that's basically the, um, the plan, if there's any questions from anyone.
How big is this, the new lot?
The new lot would be approximately six acres, and what Lori wanted Neil to do was to basically encompass the portion of DeGraff's road into the lot because she really doesn't have any reason to keep that with the parcel. So we kind of offset DeGraff's Way, um, 25 feet from center line, and, and then we just came to a point and then we just, uh, you know.
Up in there, yeah.
Right, so she has no reason to access that area, so, um, makes more sense for that to go with the six acre parcel.
Yeah, so I guess the only question that comes to mind, um, is the access. Um, I know it's a, a private road, uh, but from the highway department, um, is it wide enough to service all the lots?
Um, we met with Mikey from Frank Parslow Construction Company, and he is developing a plan for us to widen the road where it comes onto the property. Um, we're going to widen it to about 20 foot and bring, bring in a new ditch along the, the inside of that elbow, if you will. Um, it'd be a, a much more safer road and much, much wider.
Okay, well, I, I also know that that road goes, again, off the property and onto an adjoining property. Is that going to be, continue to be a private, uh, right of way? Through, through the new six acre lot?
Oh, I see it here. That gray thing.
Yeah, I spoke with Marlin Park about it as well, and she's just eager that to make the road much safer and wider. She had an accident on the road many years ago and is worried about it's been having places for us to plow the snow away and out of, and out of the way for her to be able to come down that road safely because she, uh, is a very cautious driver.
So Neil, Neil, the question is, um, it'll still be a private road, right?
Oh, it'll still be a private road, yes.
Correct. Right, Peter, that was the question?
Well, my question is that the property, the adjoining property to the, to the north, um, that road goes onto their property. Do they still have a right of way over that?
Yes.
They do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, there's an existing 16 foot wide deeded right of way along that, uh, that gravel road, Peter.
Okay.
And that won't change. That'll stay the same. Unless we're asked to make it wider through the property that we can. We obviously can't change it on land that we don't own.
Right. Uh, but is, is it 16 foot up to the new six acre lot?
The right of way is not the travel, not the travel way, the right of way is, yes.
Okay. Okay, Melissa, has this, is, has the highway department been, uh, involved, have been asked to look at this in any way?
No, not yet. Um. We haven't, we haven't gotten that far. I, I knew this, I knew, I figured you guys would want to do a site visit.
Well, I'm definitely going to be the site rep because it's across the street from my house.
Beautiful, and I knew.
Easy for me.
I knew that this accessway was going to get a little interesting.
So, uh, let me ask board members if they have any questions regarding this subdivision?
It's pretty steep. That's the only thing I'm noticing. That's why I turned on the contour, but I guess that's why you have the switchback, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, right.
That's, that right there is like 80 feet.
I, I actually went through like an average grade, uh, calculation from O'Hale Mountain Road up to where Neil wants to put his driveway. It's approximately 1,200 feet. Wow. If you calculate the average grade, it's about 7%. Obviously, once you get past the DeGraff parcel and start climbing the hill, it does increase.
But. Does it go, does it go over 10%?
It, it does in one, two, three, four small sections, but in general, it's less than 12 and a half percent with the exception of there's one spot that's about 60 feet long that's upwards of 16%.
See, it's coming along sideways if I, if you're following the old driveway until it gets to about here where the switchback is, and then it's pretty steep.
There's a point right around the switchback that's about 16%. It's for about 50, 60 feet long. Otherwise, it's all less than 12 and a half percent.
Yeah, because it's going slot sideways across the slope. It's just that one area right there that you got a problem.
Yeah, but the, um, the idea would be that we would clear the, um, clear the trees in, in between that and make, and change the grade on it, uh, with the, with the, uh, Frank Parslow company. And, you know, the grade would, would be addressed.
How high are you?
He's less than 1,200. He's just under, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
You know why I'm asking, but I hope you will spare the trees as much as you can.
I haven't been in front of Woodstock in a while, but I, I remember the 1,200 foot scenic overlay.
Jeff, I have two, I have two questions. Do you, do you think they're going to need a road maintenance agreement for that?
I was wondering that.
Um, because the deed is from forever ago with the access. That's, that was my, my note that I wrote about this. Um, what's your thoughts?
Neil, had, had you come across any kind of road maintenance agreement that exists or not? I don't remember.
We don't have one in place at this moment.
So you've got three lots that are using the road? So you've got three lots that are using the road? Or will be?
Well, currently there's three houses that have driveways off of it. There's also two vacant lots.
Oh, yeah, there's this one down here.
Right.
And that one.
Correct.
And then this is the new one and then Park up there.
Right. And there's even De Graff on the right side of the road across from their house that's owned by a different man, member of the family, it looks like. So whether that's a developable lot, I'm not sure. But there's, there's three houses now. Neil's would be the fourth at this point in time.
So my thought is that you're gonna want to talk to a lawyer about a road maintenance agreement and have that drawn up before we get to the final plan stage. Um, and septic stuff from the county, if you could just get me copies of that whenever. I know it's in process, but that would be great. I keep that in the file also. But Neil, does that make sense to you? If we just a current road maintenance agreement, a lawyer can draw one up, but then you're taking care of you, your driveway and your neighbors and everyone's on the same page. So there's no lawsuits later on.
Yeah, I would hope to be able to sign something like that, but you know, I can't speak for the other
Exactly.
way. So they may refuse to sign something like that. Um, uh, I, but what would I do if they did refuse, refuse?
Are you saying just a road maintenance agreement with himself that he'll take care of it from his property to Ohio Mountain Road?
Peter, what do you think? There's just so many other houses involved.
Yeah, well, there's two, two things is that, um, you know, once you have over three houses accessible road, um, you you go to a major road. Um, but this isn't all in the same subdivision. So the problem is that the new lot. Um, either they they have to come to some agreement for plowing and and the maintenance of the road. Um, because obviously the folks that are using the road now, the road is going to get more use. Um, and therefore needs more repair and so on. So I think it definitely needs a road maintenance agreement, but on the other hand, you, the other neighbors may not agree to that.
Right.
Um, I mean, when we do a full subdivision, if we were dividing all these lots now, then we would require it, of course. But um, it's something that's going to have to be worked out with the new owner of the six acre lot and the uh, owners of the other lots that already exist. Um, you know, I'll take a look at the road, but I I do believe, Melissa, that we should have the highway department um, take a look and make sure that we get there okay.
Absolutely.
Um, other than that, I don't see any other problems. Any members of the board have any other questions?
No.
All right, well, um, as I said, uh, I'll do a site inspection. Certainly, uh, any other board members welcome to.
Sure, I I can meet you guys there and walk you through the property at any time. If you'd like to to reach out, I can explain it to you and show you diagrams of of the house that we we hope to build. Um, and if if you would like to meet there, I'm more than happy to walk you through that.
Uh, sure, I I live right across the street and I'm actually pretty familiar with the property. So um, but uh, if I have any questions, I'll give you a call. And then we can go take another look. The only thing I'm asking is, is the house site staked out in any way? Do you have any stakes where the house is gonna be?
Not yet.
That's, if you could do that and um, where your, where your driveway is gonna come off of the De Graff Way Road.
Okay, I think I could do that.
Just a few stakes, just so we can see, uh, you know, what kind of terrain we're going through and what kind of cut and fill or and drainage issues we might have to look at.
Okay.
All right.
All right. So Neil, once you get it staked out, let me know and then I'll let Peter know that it's ready for him to go take a look.
See.
Talk to your lawyer a little bit about the maintenance agreement and how it's set up and see what they recommend.
Peter?
Yeah.
Hi, Lori.
The one thing that's important is to, you know, in understanding that there's a a large level in the hill that goes up behind my house and where Neil and Betty want to build their home. And having Frank Parslow, who's done so many good road construction through much more difficult terrain, he's already been up there to look at widening to alleviate any congestion runoff and danger in the curve. Um, that is on my existing property and which, you know, only impacts Marlin Park. Um, and and just to, I know the trees are such an important, you know, consideration in our community. The few trees that would come down are scrubby pines. There's are no big, beautiful, old trees in this section of the property.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a fair amount of open, like right in here there's open.
It's a big meadow. It used to be back in the day when it was all farmland. That was along Yari Hill Road was the meadow, which I keep mowed so that the trees don't invade it. And, you know, work with the land conservancy to keep that open. Um, there's the meadow that's around my house and then up above where we're talking about is still a meadow that I haven't been able to maintain as well. When I first, oh, when I first acquired the property, it was a much bigger meadow. Um, but the, the pines have grown in. So that's where we're talking about and it is all, it's beautifully level. And I was impressed when the health department said it looked like an in-ground system could go in there. Although there may have to be some fill brought in.
Okay. All right, well, um, sounds good. We'll get a site visit done and then uh, we have any questions? We'll get back.
Great. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody.
Good, good. Okay, so now we have the discussion of the housing oversight and task force zoning amendments, written suggestions and feedback.
And Kirk is here and of course I'm here.
Okay, so I'll just start and then we'll get members of the board uh, to chip in here. Just starting with a summary of proposed zoning changes. Um, well, let me give you an overall view of of what I see the objectives are. Um, and it starts with what they call major subdivisions. And the idea is that the area of land um, that can be built on, in other words, subtracted all wetlands, wetland buffers, stream, stream buffers and other uh, critical environmental areas. Once those are subtracted out, the land that's left is then the amount of acres you get to work with. What they're proposing is um, with, if you do that, you take out the conservation easement or it's called a conservation subdivision. That you can then change the lot sizes in the land that you have left.
Right.
So that um, you can still get your units in there, but maybe on some smaller lots. Um, so that's pretty straightforward. Um, my first question is, is why is it, I I see later on, there's one reference to a minor subdivision. But my question is, uh, why is it only the major subdivision that could have this uh?
No, they, the minor ones could, Peter. It's the major ones are required to.
Okay.
The minor ones, if we felt and the owner felt that that was a good thing to do, it could certainly be done that way.
Okay.
And in addition to that, if you have a minor subdivision and then two years later you have another one and another one and another one. The tracking is built in so that when it gets to five, it converts to a major and it has to be done with the conservation area.
Okay, so then the next major step, which I think is really important and and good news, is that the lots that are left around uh, in a big subdivision around environmentally sensitive areas, being wetlands and watercourses. Um, that um, that they will have a building envelope. Which is the area in which you can build the house, the septic, the drives, pool, tennis court, whatever. Um, and that is to be delineated in a meets and bounds, which is going to be a little diff- different than the way things are done. Because normally you take a lot and it's a five acre lot and you have your outbound and that's the description of the lot. Now what we're saying is you're gonna have a lot, but within that lot, you're gonna have a meets and bounds description of the building envelope. So that anybody could go back anytime, any surveyor could go back years later and actually see that the building and development is still contained within that uh, building envelope. So that'll be a little bit different. We've never quite done anything like that before, but it's, it's a fantastic idea because it keeps sprawl out of the protected areas. Um, just one more thing for enforcement to deal with, but um, because once we sign off on it, it's, that's, that's it for us. Um, so that was the, the main thing on the um, subdivision. And I'm glad Judy straightened that out because I I was concerned why the major and not the minor. So.
Well, minor can be just like what we just did with one piece cut off. And it would get very difficult to enforce that sort of conservation thing if you're doing something as small as that.
Right. Um.
By the way, just to be clear, conservation easement is a different thing. And you can have a conservation easement be the way that that open land is handled, but there are other ways to do it. Like a homeowners association managing it and Kirk may have more to say about that, the various ways that could be done.
All right. Um, yeah. You know, as I mentioned before, if somebody has a big lot that goes up the side of a mountain. Um, and they want to do some developing. The idea would be to not go up the mountain, but to take the land that's down below and make smaller lots so that you can get some housing in there, but not have to put roads up the mountain.
Yep.
And so that's a good point. Um, I I guess between the minor and the major, um, the major requiring it and a a minor subdivision um, can be up to three lots. So you could have a minor subdivision on a hundred acre piece of property. So something to consider. Um,
Well, again, we could certainly recommend it. And if they then decided that that big piece that they kept, they wanted to subdivide it again. When it got to be five acres, they would have to do a major subdivision based on the original plan.
Right. Uh-huh. Um, it's just going to be interesting for the board to deal with a subdivision application that is like I just described. And where this, the owner or the buyer wants to put a nice big house up on the mountain with a great view. And the planning board says, well, it'd be great if you put about three little houses on the bottom. I don't know how that would fly, but um, anyway, let me just go through a few other things and so we can get some questions from the board. Um, we, we got into uh, requiring that, you know, the the ver- variety of housing types. And the big question to me is um, affordable housing or moderate income housing. And I I know I talked to Judy about this before. Yes, the county actually has a, an income level that they consider. Um, you know, they have a number for it. But in Woodstock, those rules seem to change in that the smaller the lot, the more expensive it is. So if you buy a twenty acre lot, you might be able to get the acres for twenty, twenty thousand an acre. But if it's a one acre lot or a half acre lot, it might cost you fifty thousand to eighty thousand dollars. I particularly know one of my neighbors is a zero point zero six acre lot with a cabin on it and it just sold for close to four hundred thousand. So.
Must have a nice view.
Yeah, no view and no nothing. So the the idea of a, of a affordability, it's not a planning board purview, I guess, so we, we would never get into finances. But but this new proposals that uh, you've all come up with uh, are excellent. And I, as a homeowner, landowner, I have twenty-five acres, I look at it and say, okay, how does, how would this affect me? And uh, and 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 what I want to do. And the issue I come up with is that most homeowners, landowners here for a while, you know, when you spend upwards of ten thousand a year on land taxes, uh, if you want to develop something or sell some lot, um, I don't know how you convince somebody to do it at a loss or or at not a profit to create affordable house when um, the land is not affordable here. Um, so that that's just a big question I had, but it's, I don't think it's a question for the planning board because we don't get into finances. Um, you know, when we create a lot, um, it's based on zoning usually. It has nothing to do with finances. So.
Peter, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
I get your point, but the three hundred and eighty thousand dollar lot you're talking about is an existing small lot. If somebody was doing a major subdivision and they had a fair amount of land and some of the resulting lots could be quite large. And maybe one of them could be a triflex or a quad flex in which one of the units could be affordable. That might be financially feasible, wouldn't it?
Uh, yeah, it it depends on the developer too, you know.
Absolutely.
The idea is that they want something from us and if they're willing to give a little, to get a little. In other words, they might be willing to create a affordable lot just so they can get the rest of what they want.
I don't know that we could require it, but it would be easier for them to do because they would have the rest of the land that they could use for more expensive houses.
And and while we're on the subject of housing, again, it's not our purview is the cost of housing, but you try to build something right now with the cost of lumber and the cost of things, I'm telling you, you can't build a chicken coop affordable. Um, a shed is through the roof. Um, so you know, when we talk about a tiny home, I just looked at them and they're upwards of thirty, forty thousand without a septic, without a well, without a road. Um, so I'm not quite sure how that all measures in, but um, I did have a quick question for you. What's the difference between a tiny home and a cabin?
Uh, I think the state has square footage definitions.
I saw the footage of tiny home, I think was, whoop, I forget.
Three hundred, yeah.
Three hundred, yeah. So, I mean, a cabin can be.
Well, you know, this whole tiny home idea is a new category and people have been building little tiny cabins and hunting cabins and places that they can go camp for a very long time.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I think the difference is that people are now defining it as a livable in a way that twenty years ago, nobody really thought of it that way. A friend of mine lived in an accessory unit over on Zina Road, no, I guess there at Sock Hill Road, that I don't know how big it was, but it had a loft and that was the sleeping area. And the downstairs was probably not a whole lot bigger than three hundred.
Well, you know, Woodstock, back in the day, was made up mostly of little shanties and shacks and cabins and.
Witcher grew.
Yeah. And I mean, back in the day, people had little tiny homes. Um.
And we liked the place enough that they added on. I mean, my house was a thousand square feet and it plus a garage, which became a bedroom, plus another uh, addition. And a lot of houses are like that. It's part of where we get our character from.
It's true. The, the other issue is that um, that we see on the planning board for all the applications that come before us for subdivisions or for uh, building in the scenic overlay and so on. They're all big houses. Huge. We haven't had an application before. We did have one not too long ago, but it's so seldom we even get an application for something less than four thousand, five thousand square feet with a pool, with a garage, with a this. Um, so at any rate, uh, that's that part of it. Um.
I guess, I guess the question I, I hope we would get some feedback on is whether any of this seems impracticable, impracticable from the, you know, the ongoing business of the planning board. Are there things that would just make our lives harder or is it going to make our lives a little bit easier and make citizens who want to develop something have more choices?
Well, it's a good question. The, um, I guess I have a question.
I guess I have a question on that front.
Sure.
Um. In terms of tiny homes, if that's, you know, what we're talking about, then um are what type of septic standards are we kind of prepared to accept for those? Are are we going to allow, for example, I think some of them use incinerator toilets, some of them use composting toilets, I mean, if if you're.
Connor, I don't think that's within our control. I think that's county health department. They if they made those kinds of things legal, it would be legal, but right now it isn't, and that means people have to meet their standards for septic.
I agree, Judy. We we'd still need it'd be the same thing. We'd still need proof from the county that the county went out and made sure it was okay.
I mean, I asked when I first moved here whether I could route my gray water from my washing machine in the kitchen and the bed and the bathroom sink only and shower as, you know, watering the lawn, and I was told, no, it all has to go through the septic. That's county. From the point of view of water conservation, they should allow it, but as of when I asked the last time, they definitely didn't. And I think that Birdcliff, no, Maverick has a uh composting toilet, but it's not a residence.
Yeah, well, like you said, that's the county. But to get back to your question, Judy, about how the planning board would deal with these new zoning changes, the only issue I see is in a subdivision, major subdivision, where the property owners uh are trying to maximize the profit. Um. And it it seems to me we're going to be having a back and forth where we say we want small lots and they say they want big lots. And um it 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 seems like a negotiating uh session to see what kind of lots we end up with as opposed to now where where we have the zoning that forces us to have either a five lot or an eight lot, that's it. Acre lot, that's it. So there's no discussion, but now there could be.
It's like that requiring really like.
So now you could get, I'm sorry.
Who's speaking?
I don't know. I tried to mute everybody, but.
The light around the pictures seems to suggest that somebody's speaking at Peter's house. Is that possible?
Nobody is. Um. So that's that's the only, I other than that, I agree with everything in it. I think John LaHalle and people who've been on this and 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 Connor have been on this thing for quite a while, we've all been pushing for these for these changes for.
I I liked Peter with the with the floating, the to piggyback over what you were saying, the floating districts starts within the town board. So as far as the negotiations go, I think it would have to start there. Judy and Kirk, correct me if I'm wrong.
That's for a very large project. That's multiple buildings that might even be eight units in each building.
Right. But it would have to start within the town board, so I think something would have to be established by the town board before it even came to the planning board. That's my point for that floating district.
But for regular major fo- subdivisions.
Yes.
We are indeed saying to a landowner, you can't just cut it up like a pizza pie. You have to take out, and now the part you take out can be the stuff that isn't buildable anyway. So the the part that you keep can be the most buildable. But they might end up with less, you know, if it was a nice cornfield where you really could make the whole thing into five acre lots, they won't be able to.
So what if they come before us and they say they got a hundred acres, but eighty of it's mountains or wetlands or whatever, and they got twenty acres left, then they want to put in sixty quarter acre lots?
They can't. The hundred acres, what zone are you thinking about?
Well, if it was that big, it'd be the R eight, but um.
Okay. A hundred acres R eight would be about eight and a fraction lots. No, sixteen and a fraction lots, right? I can't do the math in my head.
Right.
It would be sixteen and a half lots, eight lots each. They can't do that because of the mountains anyway. So if they can get sixteen reasonable lots out of the twenty acres that are left, they could do that. An acre apiece, it would it would work. It would be clustered, but then the rest, they couldn't build on those mountains anyway, so why are they better, why are they worse off?
There is one aspect of this that, you know, the owners will want to hear, sorry to interrupt on this discussion, but I just want to add to this, is that properties that are on that are adjacent to open space are more valuable.
Yes. It does add value to being.
It does increase value.
It does, it does.
And so that because that's an advantage to the landowners and the developers for that perspective to have these properties adjacent to that property that's open, that portion of the property that's open. That would be one driving aspect to increase the value of each of those properties as much as possible.
Mm hmm. All right, but you get back, Judy, to the idea, okay, so you're gonna, what's left, you're going to make smaller lots. Um.
Now, I believe I believe that one of those owners could actually own most or all of the open space. They just couldn't develop it.
Right, they would have a house that included that, and the rest of it would be smaller. And if you wanted to get a higher density, then you would go into the floating um floating uh high density living quarters. Um.
But you could have an eight, you could have a s- a three, four, five, six, seven, eight unit on one of those properties also. It's all subject to to planning board review. But fees, it's feasible for part of that hundred acre lot that is mostly mountains and woods to have a multiple dwelling on it, which certainly increases the value, but it also introduces the fact that it's going to be rental properties or condo.
Right. One other question I had for the committee that that did this. Um, how much did you look at the the build out analysis? In other words, how many homes do we have in town now? And how many is our max?
I can respond to that a little bit, Judy. Uh, what we did look at um is we looked at uh taking a different perspective. And rather than uh, we looked at the biggest exercise we took was to take a geological uh map of the characteristics, the geological characteristics of our town. And then identify where all the aspects of the qualities of, if you will, the issues associated with our town that are geologically at risk. Okay? And we isolate all of all that through in in a map. And then from there, we were able to see quote unquote buildable land.
Right.
Right? And in that assessment, in that analysis, we determined that there were some areas that were more bu- buildable, if you will, might you might say in areas in terms of hamlets or portions of hamlets that were more buildable than others, right? But when you went down to another level where you could look at parcel by parcel, you then realize that, no, actually, there was quite a bit of 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 balance to that la- to that buildable land amongst all hamlets, okay? And so that was one analysis we did. We did not actually do a build out analysis. There was one that was done rather uh uh, I would say in a compromised fashion by Behan Associates when we did the comprehensive plan. They did, uh, you know, which I was the chair of the committee that wrote authored that. Um, and when Behan put it together, it was a way of protecting their input to because they had anyways. Uh, there was a a a an inferior build out analysis in the comprehensive plan. We knew it was inferior. That's why we placed it in the um as an a- an appendix and not a part of the main document. Um, it's just referenced, I believe. But the point is, is that uh there is a study, a b- a build out study, but we took it a little differently, Peter. Because we, again, we ba- based it based on uh the environmental conservation and preservation perspective of our values of our town. So we wanted to look at it from a pa- perspective of the environment first and then find what's buildable second. We then took that concept further into the conservation based development, which is a- again, we didn't make it up. It's being pe- being applied throughout our country as a means of uh smart growth. And um and so, you know, one of the things that we felt like with some of the negotiations that you're referring to or some of the things you're mentioning to uh is that we, our mandate was to create building options for the town, housing options for the town. And also for it to be dispersed across all hamlets. Those were two driving issues that came out of the comprehensive plan. And so the housing options are the triplex and quads, the modified site plan review within that domain. Then you have the four, five, six, seven, and eight, maximum eight. And those are also building types. And in there, we have a myriad of possibilities of a developer being interested possibly event of being having a map, if you will. Because we wrote this code for multiple people. We wrote the code for developers so they had a clear understanding of what can be done in Woodstock and what can't be clear. We have it for property owners, a clear understanding of what's there within their rights, what isn't. Same thing with, you know, with any subdivision within that. So the clarity and and also then for our neighbors, clarity for neighbors. That was something we wanted there to be clarity uh within the code for neighbors. One of the greatest things we feel uh the value that we do have is the clarity of the code, just the the language of which it's written. I think that there's a there's it's very defensible.
So for one example.
Very enforceable. It's very enforceable. And so that's what I mean by defensible. It's very enforceable because it's clear. So I I just, you know, I'm I'm going on a little bit, but Peter, I just wanted to point out that we built in options for people to choose what would be possible to build on their property as private property owners. They have those options now available, right? They now have a clear and concise manner of how to go about getting that approved through this group. The group, this group has now the standards to which to apply to each one of those site plans that come before you, rather than you having to decide how best to decide. We've given you a whole boatload, if you will, of of standards to operate by for each one of those uh types of site plans, and as they become more complex, so does the site, so does the review. Right? So that that was the progression of our thinking is that as as they become more complex, they require a little bit like other layers, additional layers of complexity of of review and approval. Right? And we feel like we've accomplished that. So now, how is that applied to the comprehensive plan? Because we now we've created options. As you stated, Peter, clearly, the market right now is set up for people that ga- they can gain their maximum profit from building large beautiful homes. That's where the ma- maximum profit is. But what we also now have created in our town is an opportunity for a property owner to look and say, wait a minute, I can increase density on my property. And that increased density on my property increases my property's value. And I can create rentals on my property and manage that if I wish or offered in in a management program. And now we have the op- the incentive for a property owner to say, hey, I think I could do that. And I could provide long term rental in an environment that is respectful. And that can create workforce housing for our employers. You know, and these are the kinds of things we try, we strove to to build in. So most of, we knew that most of the efforts would be in the minor subdivisions. You know, the two lots, it's two buildings, three buildings for it. That's where most of the site plans are going to come before you. It's going to be rare when it's going to be a uh a a large site plan. It's going to be rare, but the tools are there for you to deal with it when they come. And that's why we did it that way, right? And it also is clear, the tools are there clearly for the developers to see how they they would approach this town if they wanted to do a major development. They have to go to the town board first or whatever it can be, right?
You're absolutely right. It's well spelled out. I've I've got all the everything you you guys produced, and it's very clear. You know, what's happened in the past is a developer comes before the planning board with a subdivision in which they've hired an engineer and surveyor. And they took the town code, they took the zoning code, and they developed this subdivision. They developed the roads, the lots, everything, and they come before us with here's, here it is. Because they took the existing code. But now what we're saying is that there's going to be, they can't just come before us with it all laid out because um it's it's going to be a back and forth with the planning board as to what uh.
Well, Pete, in principle, they could, but they have to read the code and take a look at where the wetlands are and where the buffers are and where the steep slopes are in deciding how they want to lay it out. It would be foolish to come before us with a pizza pie and not consider the land, which, I mean, they don't, they generally do consider the land somewhat. They just aren't required to in a more clear way.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree. It it just is going to require more.
A lot of getting used to.
More of a sketch plan review, you know, even preliminary.
Sure.
Right, absolutely, absolutely. And you know, the 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 thing that too here, Peter, is that um it is new. There's a lot of newness to what we're proposing. And the planning board, as well as the residents, will all have to have a learning curve uh regarding it. And so and there will have to be an effort to educate both the public, the property owners, and and this planning board in order to properly work with all the tools that are now available to you, because there's a lot of tools available to you. You have a lot of decision points to leverage with the property owners.
Let me uh, let me get some other members of the board to kick in here and ask some questions if they have them.
I have one comment too before we go. I just wanted to clarify something.
And John, or anybody have any questions uh regarding what the the planning board might be looking at soon? John?
Firstly, I think it's a marvelous piece of work.
Thank you, John.
And I would. Really overdue. There was a small attempt at this in the mid eighties, and it didn't work and got shot down badly. But some of your ideas regarding the uh subdivision and making workforce housing and making it more affordable are are long overdue. So I really want to see this succeed, and I think the planning board needs to play a major part in it.
Commend, I commend Deborah, Kirk, Judy for their participation with us, the planning board. Like, they have been on the phone with me, in emails with me, talking to you guys, and tried to keep us in the loop with all of this. And then when I went through and did it, like they they acknowledged us in the code as Dennis Doyle told us that we weren't really, we didn't have a piece. Um. I think they did a marvelous job too. I think it's great. I mean, all your input is needed, but your hours of work did not go unnoticed, Kirk, Judy, Deb, Nan. Kudos. Thank you.
Yeah, it's excellent. I I just went through all the youth tables and all the uh, all the documents that you guys produced, you know, all the stuff. Um, it's great. And it's like John said, well overdue. Um. You know, the changes to the uh youths youths, the tables. As I always joke, I say, you know, our tables need to be upgraded because if you look at them in Woodstock, a circus is allowed, but a wedding isn't. So if you look at our codes, there's, they're a little outdated. Um, any other members, board have questions for?
I have a question.
Yeah, sure, Jay.
Um, I also think this is all just terrific, and I support everything about it. I watched the video and I paged through some of the documents. I haven't read all it all, but um I just one kind of technical question I was just curious about. For these um cluster developments, which I know they're not called cluster anymore, they're called a environmental something.
Cluster's all right. Why not?
Okay, well, I'll use cluster for now. Um. When you when you make all the properties much smaller so that you can protect the larger of the environment, who owns the rest of that property?
Well, that's actually a question that I've been trying to get my head around. And I think there are a number of options, and Kirk may want to add to that. It could be a conservation easement if you found a nonprofit that wanted to do that. It could be all.
The reason for my question is I just looking at like what the traumas would be that would come like in front of.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about. I'm like, I want us to know.
Land that then neighboring houses would feel threatened by. I mean, as much as it's great to have an open space that's not built on, I used to live next to someone like Hill before, you know, it's wonderful. But um is it public space? Can people go in there and have a picnic? Can, you know, I was just curious.
Yeah, there there's a lot of variables here, James. Yeah, there, there, there's a lot of variables here, James, that will need to be clarified. And, and this is part of the discussion of the evolution of this thinking. I think right now is that what Judith alluded to is that there's a, a number of different vehicles of how that land would be managed post, uh, the development of the site.
It could be a homeowners association where everybody
Right.
is a co-owner. It could be broken up into several pieces that belong to specific houses, but they're still not buildable. And the rest of the people in that area still have access like for hiking or something.
Well, you know, again, this is Judith, Judith, hold, hold that thought for a moment. Let me complete my, my moment here, because it, the, the, the public use, James, is something that will also, this town will need to find ways to address. Right? And so that's part of the evolution of this thinking of this, of us conserving our, our open space and making it, uh, and so now is it all of a sudden, we're just going to have more private property signs everywhere because it's a bigger space, you know? Or are we going to have some? So there's a, there's an evolution to this, but we're basically putting it on the property owners to first take responsibility for the land that they're developing and preserve and conserve where it needs to be. We're putting that on the property owners. Okay? How that land is managed is up to, there's many different tools available to us as a town, to the developer, to the property owner, to the individual property owners, if it's an association, to all of these things. There's many things available. So I, you know, and so it's nebulous. It's nascent, sort of speak, not nebulous, it's nascent a little bit. But it, it is worthy of the effort to try to get it managed down the road. It's my, my honest response. Right?
No, that's right.
Kirk, can I ask a question?
Sure.
It seems to me that what's implicit in what you said is if the town passes our proposal, the next step is going to be some kind of a work group that teases out the various ways in which that kind of property could be managed and makes that menu of choices available.
Right.
And does some educating around it.
And one of the most important things.
We're not there yet.
We're not there yet. And Judith, one of the most important things to what you're just saying is that then, Peter, coming back to you, you then have the criteria to operate by so that you can approve the, the site. You now have the options available to the, you know, the criteria, meaning what are the possibilities for this, uh, this open space to be managed? That criteria has been met through what Judith just described. That would become something more mature.
So it's like a road management agreement, a road maintenance agreement. They have to include that in the plan.
And that, Peter, you would then have the tool, the mechanism to manage that in the approval process. That's the ultimate goal. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it certainly does. Now, something that James has brought up is interesting, um, you know, uh, one of the members of the planning board years ago, Jim Colbert, um, suggested that whenever we do a subdivision, that we require at least one lot, if not two lots, to be small, very small, affordable lots. That got shot down like, like a Russian helicopter. That was just boom. Nobody liked that. Nobody wanted to that, you know, they just didn't want to have this little tiny house next to their big mansion. They didn't want it. And, uh, we tried. Um, but I think, I think that this, what you've got now gives the tools.
Yes.
And for the homeowners to be able to review this and see, uh, you know, to include this as a possibility.
Yeah, you know, and the thing, the thing that I want to stress, a couple of things I would like to add just before the, my time is empty here, you know, over tonight. And you have further time to, for deliberation amongst yourselves and to make your comments collectively. Uh, back, and which we welcome and really very looking forward to your comments and suggestions. And feel free to be clear, you know, to, to, to take those steps to make recommendations. Please. This is the time to do it. It's an internal review, right? You, you can make this better. And if you can, bring those comments forward. But before I wanted to, before I go any further, I just wanted to articulate one thing. And that is to give a definition to the use of the words, uh, community character. So that you know how we were thinking and what we were thinking when we use that phrase in the code. Okay? Because there is some interpretation that's left if that's, if not defined properly. So define, the definition that we are using for community character is taken from the entirety of the community. Meaning the, the character of the community is from the entire towns. The open space, it's wilderness, it's parks, it's roads and structure, it's businesses and cultural offerings. And all of the things of which the town possesses in its economic system, its community organizations, and in its infrastructure. And so it's in that character that we're looking to try to preserve as a rural town. Right? We are a rural town. And so these are the, that's the way we framed the character. Now, there are specifics when it comes to aesthetics. And that is with regards to multifamily dwellings. Because as you know, we have no, there are no laws to, as of right. You know, in terms of single-family homes. People have, they can do with, you, you, you as a planning board don't have much say, you know, it's, it's as of right. They go to, they go to the building department. Follow, follow, they're on their way. Right? Everything related to family, uh, multifamily housing needs to have some level of, of, um, aesthetics attached to it so that the neighbors feel served, if you will. So there's preservation of neighborhood, that there's not this kind of, you know, different aspects of the buildings look very, very different than the neighborhood. So that's the reason why we emphasize the, uh, aesthetics within the multifamily dwelling site plan reviews. Okay? Is from those perspective. Then we also use screenings and various other tools that you have as tools to ensure that they, that this property will, will, will work well with the neighborhood. Okay? So these are the things we gave you in the code. And thinking about the effort that it will take to, for people to feel comfortable as neighbors. Right? To, you know, to go through these projects. So other things associated with that, but I just really wanted to point out the, the issue of um, where this all came from is the comprehensive plan. All the issues we brought forward in the code were driven out of our understanding of what the comprehensive plan wanted us to, to push for in terms of housing. We only focused on housing. There are comments that are coming back that are outside of our domain and we are making that list and we'll offer those to the town board. So any comments even, or even outside of this particular code that you feel are relevant to housing, feel free to make them. And we'll add that to the conversation. In terms of, of something that James alluded to, um, the, the documents are lined up in a way in, at the site from higher level to more granular level. And so if you just wanted to get an overview of things and read the summaries, and then there's a detailed summary and those two things, that will give you a tremendous amount of information, those two documents right there. So that would be the high-level perspective. And then if you really wanted to get down into the details and go into the red line document. And there's, you know, you can really get into the details there. So, but everybody has that choice and you can go as deep as you want. So, uh, that's really, if there's any more comments or questions for me, I'd, I'd be happy to stay, but I don't want to wear my welcome out here. And thank you for your attention this evening and allowing me to say a few things.
Okay, great. Well, thank you again for all the work you've done. And I'm sure the board will be uh, putting together some specific, uh, suggestions and pass it on to you all.
Great. If there's, you feel any need for Nan to come and speak with her, I can, we can make arrangements for the consultant to be a part of another meeting with us. So if you really wanted to get into some details there.
At this point, we need to give, we as the board need to give us as the housing oversight task force, whatever we feedback we can get now, but we've got another draft to do.
Right, right.
So we have time to.
And to work towards that draft, even if you wanted to, you know, have Nan be involved with some of the issues that we, you faced, then we can do that before the end of this term here, this version one, right? And we can get it that much tuned up. If you feel the need for it, we can make that arrangement. Any, any other way you feel that, uh, you, you need support from us, just let me know, please. And let Deborah know. And we'll be, we'll do our best to respond accordingly.
Great. Thank you very much. We're making progress. You guys are making progress. This is well overdue, as John said. All right, um, does anybody else have another question? Or we got a few more things to do. So, uh, we'll leave the housing oversight for now and go to unfinished business.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Kirk.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kirk.
Um, we have to make a motion to return a performance bond in the amount of $7,202.42 to Sumpus, uh, which was the planning board case nineteen dash twelve seventeen and Wetlands water course permit case nineteen dash oh four two. Um, can someone make that motion?
Done, moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there a second?
And, oh.
Okay.
And then we have to make a motion to approve credits for Judy for attending the webinar Habitat Assessment of the Hudson River Estuary Program on June ninth, two thousand and twenty-two. All in favor? Well, make a motion. Second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Aye.
I'm getting much more educated with Zoom.
All right, everybody. Well, we certainly had a good discussion on these proposed zoning and, and changes, um.
Can I ask a question, Peter?
Sure.
Um, do you feel, or does anybody feel that we need to ask, we as the planning board need to ask the housing oversight group to make a list of possible ways to manage the land? Or is that something that can come as we get to it?
Manage the, uh, the?
The open land.
The vacant land.
Yeah, different, because obviously we are going to want to ask a developer to include that in their planning, how they see that being done. And that's not something they're used to thinking about. So knowing a menu of choices and what's more difficult to do and what's easier to do would probably be useful. I just don't know if we need to wait for that for the rest of the law to go forward. And that's against what I'm asking.
Yeah, I, I, as, as, as he said, there are many, many options you can do with that vacant land. Besides finding, uh, the land conservancy or someone else. Um, one of the questions that comes to my mind is, is taxes.
Me too.
If it's not buildable, you can't build on it. Um, do, do you get a tax reduction if you, if you do that? That's one question. Um, so, but yeah, um, you know, what James brought up, if, if it's, is it communal land? You know, can you have a far, you know, can you have, well, you know, a path?
It has to be defined. And it seems to me that's something that, if it's not, I don't think it's clear in the law as we put it in there. And maybe that's a suggestion we ought to make. That as part of the sketch plan review, the developer has to indicate some of the possibilities that they think are realistic.
Of course, they can always include the remaining land to one of the lots.
Exactly.
That lot with, with a building envelope. So that
Right.
tiny lot could really be a big lot, but only have a tiny building.
That's right. And other people in the subdivision would have to have visual access to it and probably some use of it. But it's only as, you know, hiking trails or something like that, and it's not open to the general public unless somebody chose to donate it in some way for that.
My, my question keeps coming back to the build-out analysis. And so what this plan does, what this proposal does is to basically allow more lots than
Yes.
that are concurrently available under the zoning. And
Yes.
how many lots?
Well, no, not more, not more. Different sized, same number. The average density of a subdivision does not change. If it's a fifty-acre lot in an R5, it's ten units, uh, ten buildings. But one of the buildings could be a multiple unit or more than one could be a multiple unit. But in terms of the number of buildings, it's the same. It's just on smaller.
Number of lots, you mean? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, that, that's true. All right, everybody. I think we've had a good discussion here. If anybody else has anything to put forward, I'd, uh, accept a motion for adjournment.
And if anybody wants to send me an email with a question, I'd send it to everybody so that we all see what the discussion is. You know, we still have half the month.
Okay, sounds good. Motion for adjournment?
Motion.
James says yes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, good night.
Good night, everybody.
Hey, guys, just really quick before you all head off, um, June thirtieth is our next meeting. It's a workshop meeting. We're going to do some webinars. Um, so we're going to do them Zoom if Judy's good with sharing a screen. That should work, right, Judy?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Uh, we're gonna revisit some wetland stuff and Peter and I will figure out which two we're gonna do this week, next week.
Okay.
Good night.
Bye, guys. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right.